Good evening. At this time, I would like to call to order the June 4th, 2024 Stanley County Board of Education meeting. Welcome to all of you in attendance. We appreciate you all being here and your support of Stanley County Schools. Unfortunately, no livestream will be available tonight, but the recorded meetings should be uploaded by tomorrow. We apologize. At this time, I would like to call on Ms. Glenda Gibson for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Dear God, we come to you with thankful hearts for all your many blessings. We are thankful for Stanley County Schools, all of our teachers, administrators, staff members, our students and their families. Tonight, God, we recognize our wonderful Stanley County School retirees for their dedication and many years of service. God, I ask you to bless them abundantly and beyond measure because we are forever grateful for them. Be with us as we enter into our meeting, as we seek your wisdom and guidance in all discussions and decisions that we make for our school system. Keep our students, teachers, and staff safe over summer break and provide them all with moments of rest, relaxation, and rejuvenation. In your name we pray. Amen. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, I'd move to amend the agenda before we go to retirees, please.
Okay.
I'd like to add Policy 4150 to discussion for the board after the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion to add Policy 4150 to discussion after the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or two, I think. Yeah, all in favor, can you raise your hand? Okay, and those opposed? Okay. Alright, so that will be added following the consent agenda. First up on our agenda tonight, I would like to call on Mr. Dr. Dennis and Mr. Lynn Plummer, sorry.
We are excited tonight to recognize our 2024 retirees who have worked tirelessly in Stanley County Schools, so we just want to make sure that they are recognized and celebrated and hopefully they'll come back and see us again one day. So, we do thank them for what they have done for our schools, for our students, and to help us along their journey with Stanley County Schools. All of them are not able to be with us tonight, but those who are are going to join us at the front. If you will, please join us up front and then we will, if you'll stay together as a group so that we can get a picture at the end. So, Ms. Amy Efferd. Angela Hatley. Ann McLendon. Bonnie Pressler. Brenda Watson. Connie Slater. Crystal Davis. Diane Smith. Sandy Duarte. Ginger Love. Janice Lee. Jeff Kidd. Joanne Jenkins. Joanna Gagliardi. Linda Campbell. Linda Medlin. Marty Ingram. Melissa Dorsey. Pat Van Heus. Renee Honey. Todd Bowers. Robert Tucker. Sandy Summerlin. Sandra Hopkins. Shannon Graham. Tammy James. Teresa Faggert. Teresa Morton. Terry Smith. Tony Trees. Tracy Smith. Tracy Cook. Wanda Manus. And Wendy Tucker. This group represents all facets of education and where we are, what we need to be able to make education happen in Stanley County Schools. We are very appreciative of all you have done, and I'm serious, come back and see us. Thank you.
If you guys will get your photos and then board members, if you'll go down, we'll thank them. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the board to go into closed session for Personnel Matters in C General Statute 143-318-11A6, Student Matters in C General Statute 143-318.11A1, Attorney/Client Matters in C General Statute 143-318.11A3, and Acquisition of Real Property in C General Statute 143-318.5.
I move we go into closed session.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we are now in closed session. It's back into open session. The next thing on our agenda is public comment. And tonight for public comment, I have Eddie and Ashley Wall.
My name is Eddie Wall. We live 33637 A-Man Road in Alamo. My son Ellington Wall will be a rising ninth grader and he will be attending Stanley Early College, I'm sorry, at Alamo High School. He wishes to, he was approved to play in 10 Alamo Middle School, which we're district for North Stanley High School, but we were approved to play and attend Alamo Middle School last three years. His wishes is to continue to be able to allow to play sports at Alamo High School. Logistically, it would make more sense for us if he could play at Alamo. We're not asking for competitive advantage, we just want to continue where we were the last three years.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate you guys coming. Board members, the next thing on our agenda for tonight is the consent agenda. Oh, actually, sorry. We amended the agenda. So, to go after it, okay. Yes, the approval amendments for the consent agenda is next. So, I have the minutes from the May 7th, 2024 regular meeting and the May 8th, 2024 special called Joint Meeting. Those have been in your packets and on board docs. If there's any changes or comments.
I move that, okay. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, those have been approved, thank you. Now, we have the discussion of Policy 4150 that has been added to the agenda. Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Wall for coming up here and Mrs. Wall for speaking. Board members, I know you've gotten my communications and we've had discussion. I would like the Policy Committee, with request of the Policy Committee, to go back and look at Policy 4150 Section DE5 and E5 where we have specifically banned the transfer of students or reassignment of schools based on athletics. I use Mr. Wall's example here where his son is attending the early college at the school. The board has previously approved his son to attend Alamo Middle School and currently for, in that appeal to Alamo Middle School, the board had an appeal process. And I would like to see fair and consistent policy by the board that can look at the educational need of the student on a case-by-case basis. It'll be very limited, very rare, but it gives the parent a voice and opportunity to help their situation. I would like to see the Policy Committee go back and draft language that maybe could be more fair and consistent.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but 4150 was not up for approval tonight. It is up for approval? Okay. Sorry, I didn't see. Yeah, it is. Okay, so since it's up for approval.
4150 is not there for approval. It never made it out of committee.
Yeah, I didn't think it was here. No, it's not up for approval. That's why I didn't think it was. So, you were wanting to pull that one and have the committee take another look at that?
It's not up for a vote on the board.
Right, but yeah.
We went through committee. It was not classified.
Right, okay, yes.
So, I'm asking that we take a vote to send this back to committee to take a second look at the appeal process and making that policy from top to bottom fair and consistent.
Okay. So, I have a motion to, I assume you're making that motion since you're asking. I have a motion to take a look at 4150 and adjust the appeal process in 4150. Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Watson, if you will take a look at that at your next Policy Committee meeting, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next on our agenda is Committee Reports. And up first, I have Facilities.
Facilities, we did have a meeting on May 22nd. Also, on May 22nd, we had the groundbreaking ceremony at Indy School for the new addition that we're doing there of 10 classrooms. It was a very exciting day. It's been a long time since this school system has had any type of groundbreaking ceremony. We were able to include students in with that. We did invite the news outlets there, so Charles, we are hoping to see those pictures in the Stanley News and Press sometime soon. That's good news, and anytime there's good news for our school system, we definitely would love to see that reported. But it was a good day. It was a really good day. We are excited to see a little progress in our county. It's been a long time.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Up next, I have Finance. Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No Finance meeting this past month, but we do have a budget hearing, Budget Meeting coming up on June 25th. Everyone wants to take a look at the County Commissioner proposed budget. They had their hearing last night. You can still voice your opinion. We've requested an amount that meets our needs and is able to address academic and curriculum opportunities for the students as well as some of our personnel needs. And to give you a quick example, we have a state mandate that came down for the classified pay scale. So, we had one more fiscal year, which is ending now, to adopt the Office of State Personnel Pay Scale for our non-certified classified employees. That was around $1.2 million, plus or minus is what we're estimated at, additional cost and unfunded mandate from the state. And we've received so far an additional million from our County Commissioner Budget Proposal. So, in the most simplest terms, the amount increase that we're proposed to get does not even meet the state unfunded mandate for the classified pay scale, meaning that we can't do anything else that you saw. We can't address curriculum opportunities, we can't address higher need schools, we can't address any of our personnel needs, and in fact, we're taking a step backwards because you got to think every employee that receives a raise through the state, well, that means our amount that the local taxpayer has to pay for their pension and retirement insurance goes up. So, we have inflation within the budget each year. So, when we can't even meet the new mandate through the funding and then we've got all of the other things that just come through, we're taking a step backwards. So, if you can, pay attention to that recommended budget. I know those folks are good people. I think they're trying to do what they think is right, but the system's in need of funding to address these. And we'll, our committee and our board will get together on June 25th, and we will have to discuss what's, it's basically a budget cut for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I add something?
Yes, ma'am.
To what Mr. Lisk said, I think what stands out in my mind most, well, there's two things. One, we recognized our retirees tonight and all their hard work and time spent over the course of their tenure time here in Stanley County Schools. I think of all of our employees now and the pay increases that they certainly deserve. And I certainly hope that there is enough in the budget that's passed to show these employees how much they are appreciated in Stanley County Schools before they leave us to go to other school systems. Second thing is, I think what bothers me most is if it is left up to us, Dr. Dennis, that we have to find the funding somehow, then we know who's going to suffer for that, and that's our children, because the resources will be taken from them and in their classrooms, the resources that they need and that our teachers need in their classrooms. So, I certainly hope that people are paying very close attention to the budget requests that we have presented, what the Finance Committee has worked diligently on, and they take a look at our people that work for us in our system and our children that go to school in our system and the needs that they have and that we should be able to provide all of those needs for them. Thank you for letting me speak that.
Thank you. Next, we have Instructional Committee, and I think we have Ms. Mandy Melton to present to us, too.
Well, I have something before.
You go right in.
Ms. Melton. I am going to say this before I call you up. I know that our Instructional Committee met on May 20th, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. We did talk about, for board members, the DARE curriculum. We had an SRO officer to come in and speak with us as well as Ms. Jennifer. Jennifer Flo. And we discussed the funding cost and the possibility of expanding that DARE instruction into the elementary schools. And I believe that that's something that Ms. Flo's continuing to work on, and it'll be something I know that probably is going to come up before the board later. There was discussion about the AVID program in our middle schools and incorporating that hopefully into our schools, and I know that Ms. Raper has been working diligently on that. Our secondary curriculum, where we have been talking about those resources, and before, Ms. Melton, before you come up here, if I don't, I hope I'm not putting you on the spot, Ms. Raper, could you present to us a little bit here about, just giving the board an update about where these resources are going to be used now?
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to speak with you. I'm Lauren Raper, the Director of Secondary Curriculum. Just an update of some of the things that we have looked at within the Curriculum Committee. We have decided for our middle schools, targeting our middle school ELA. We are working with the Savas Company, pardon, and we are looking at going into a contract with the Savas Company for what would be student workbooks along with teacher edition guides that would help ensure we are providing for our students and for our teachers grade level appropriate curriculum that they can use to not only increase rigor in their classroom but to also have assessments and assignments that are standard aligned. And so, I brought a couple of those. We're looking to really target our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade ELAs, so again, we can continue that very strong foundation that we know they have coming out of elementary school, and we can continue that going forward. And just as we've spoken in the Curriculum Committee, we would then look later to how can we expand that the best way possible into our high schools. We did a very rigorous process for this. We looked through three companies. We had a rubric process of where teachers gave us feedback and we were able to choose this resource. So, our teachers were excited about it, our administrators were excited about it. We have wonderful teachers, so we know they have great assignments, they have great resources that they are already using. What we really want this to be is kind of that meat and potatoes, so we can ensure every student is getting that high-quality, grade-level, curriculum-aligned instruction that we are able to provide to them as a district. So, really a shout out to our teachers and to our administrators for taking it very seriously and looking through those resources. So, I did bring some, I will leave them up here if you all want to peruse them. The other, and I, again, will just kind of be just brief and short, we also looked at a Math 1 curriculum. A lot of times you will hear North Carolina is a core, a common core state, well, that's kind of a misnomer, we are a North Carolina common core state. And so, it is difficult to go with a big box company when you are looking at curriculum. So, I feel very confident, and our teacher and administrator committee felt very confident when they also reviewed, this is a curriculum from BW Walsh, and it literally goes through our North Carolina standards almost one by one. And there is sort of an old-school look. There is a student edition workbook that matches completely with a teacher edition workbook and that also matches with digital resources online. So, our teachers, again, what we are hoping to do is provide that standard-aligned, very rigorous curriculum, so our teachers don't have to go out, pick and choose things that may not necessarily be aligned, may not necessarily be providing our students that rigor. We want to put the tool in their hands, so they, as that craftsman, can continue to do their work because we do have phenomenal teachers. And we just feel like this would be a great addition for our teachers to really help them inside the classroom. And so, one thing that we are looking to do is leverage our ESAR funding that we do have remaining, that we could utilize to purchase these resources and able to get them into the hands of our teachers, hopefully starting this next school year. Okay?
Thank you. I don't know if any board member has any questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious what the cost for that is. I remember when I first came on the board, there was some reading material, I think, for elementary grades that was around $900,000 for five years.
And this is one thing that we also discussed with these resources, when you are looking at a full curriculum purchase, actually very affordable. So, in looking at the Math 1, we are looking at print, we are looking at the digital resources, and five years as far as a contract where they would send us the workbooks every year. So, they are meant to be expendable. And if we included taxes, that was approximately $140,900. So, again, that is a full Math 1 curriculum that essentially we are providing every five years, or excuse me, every year for five years to every single one of our high school teachers and to our middle school teachers. And then, when we were looking at the Savas, again, this would be a five-year contract, would be sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, print and online materials would be a little bit over $316,000. So, all in total, right under, right under five is where we were at.
And we were looking at some other resources at the high school level, we decided not to purchase this time, especially since standards are being re-elevated.
Yes. Specifically looking, thank you, Dr. Dennis, specifically looking at our biology. However, all of the science standards have been rewritten. Next year is the first year that they will be implemented. So, in order to be good stewards of our finances, we wanted to wait. We wanted to see, do we have a company that really has those incorporated with high-quality materials, assessments, that would really be a benefit to our teachers and our students? Any other questions?
So, is that cost for the whole five-year program, $500,000?
Yes, that cost would be, that would cover the five years, and that also covers the shipping for the next five years, because every year, they will resend us those things. So, all of that is encompassed within that dollar amount.
And that's for what grade levels?
It is sixth, seventh, and eighth grade ELA, so English Language Arts, and then it is middle school Math 1 and also high school Math 1. We identified Math 1 as being one of our areas that we need to support, quite frankly, when we look at, when we look at our district assessments. So, that is one reason why we decided to go that route as well.
Not a question, just a comment, but I know some of our parents or older adults that are guardians of our students are not as savvy with the technology part, so having an actual workbook or worksheets in their hands is going to be a plus, I think, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Our teachers also asked for that as well. You know, there's a lot, when you have that book in front of the student, you are seeing what that student is working with. So, I really want our teachers to feel empowered. We have listened to them. But again, if you've got a great lesson that you know covers the standard, we are not saying throw everything away, but what we are saying is, this is a way we can guarantee we are providing grade-level, rigor-appropriate, standard-aligned curriculum. And I think our teachers And I think our teachers are, I know our middle school ELA teachers are very appreciative of that.
I'm very appreciative of you, you know, doing all of this and our teachers as well. I, I think it will be, I'm just interested in seeing the outcome of, well, I guess even you could see the outcome maybe mid-year as well. And then, you know, by the year's end. But I'm excited about this. I think probably all board members, and I believe our parents will be as well excited. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you come up, Ms. Melton, I have one more thing. And Dr. Dennis, this may be directed more with you, but our committee, we did request some calendar options. Because it was mentioned about next year, Easter falling so late, spring break falling so late that only, there would only be eight days before testing. So is that something that our calendar committees, are they working on some options for us? Okay, so, but that will be something that maybe soon that we will have. Okay. Ms. Melton. She gave a wonderful presentation to our committee on the CTE plan, so thank you for being here to share it.
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the chance to present with you guys. I'm asking for approval for our local CTE plan for the 24, 25 school year. I presented that in committee, but here is an overview of some of the things we're proud of and we'd like to brag on. The first slide shows our enrollment in CTE in Middle and High School. You see, we are rebounding from COVID. And we are also increasing our middle school enrollments and allowing more of those exploration options in middle school. Also, I want to highlight the CTE concentrator graduation rate. If you look, the graduation rate of CTE concentrators, which are students who choose to take two or more courses in one CTE pathway, is consistently higher than the state of North Carolina and consistently higher than the district. Also, the next slide I wanted to highlight is our credentials earned over the years. You see, we are continuing to grow with those credentials. And I am very pleased to announce preliminary numbers of this school year places us at about 4, 4,900 credentials. By far the most we have ever achieved in Stanley County. And that's something we are extremely proud of, that our students are leaving our courses with credentials that transfer to the workplace and make them more employable. Just a brief overview of the program. We offer 11 courses in agriculture education, 10 courses in business and IT, one career development course, six courses in family and consumer sciences, four courses in health science, two courses in drone technology. This school year, we offered three courses in marketing, which was a program area that we had lost in the last couple of years because of teacher changes. And I was very pleased that that's back. Four courses in automotive, three courses in woodworking, three firefighting courses, four carpentry courses, three drafting courses, two electrical trades courses, and four masonry courses. Another thing that we are extremely proud of in CTE is our CTSOs, our Career and Technical Student Organizations. We have three very active CTSOs in Stanley County, our National Technical Honor Society, our Future Farmers of America, and our Skills USA. We are continuing to build our work-based learning options in Stanley County. Apprenticeships are continuing to expand. We started a few years back with just automotive apprentices. We have expanded into early childhood apprentices. And you'll see a picture of our first ever student on the right, who was an early childhood apprentice. We've also expanded into bricklaying and construction. The great thing about apprenticeships is they do their pre-apprenticeship work while they're in high school. They move to the apprenticeship portion while they're at the community college. And that tuition is covered by the state of North Carolina because they are part of the registered apprenticeship program. Another part of work-based learning, we've worked really hard in the last couple of years to expand is internships. We have students all over the county in a variety of internships. They're across the board in every different area. And the number of children we are enrolling in this program continues to increase. Every two years, we're tasked by the state to complete a local comprehensive needs assessment so that we can get a good judge and a good read on our CTE programs here. And we meet with a wide variety of stakeholders to discuss how we measure on performance indicators, alignment to our labor market, the size, scope, and quality of the programs we offer, progress toward implementing new pathways, recruitment, retention, and training of our staff, and progress toward equity and access. One of the major stakeholders that we rely on for that information is our Business Advisory Council that meets quarterly. This is made up of local business owners, CEOs of local business, the community college, and the workforce board, Next Gen, and a variety of different members that we pull together that we can gain information on to see if we are meeting the needs of our current labor market. Another key source of information in this process is our Teacher Advisory Council. Every school has a representative on this. We also meet quarterly. So we can discuss specifically the retention, the retaining, and the professional development for our teachers in CTE. One of the big things coming down the pipe from Raleigh, our career plans. That's something we actually implemented a couple of years back, so we are continuing on. Last year, we were fortunate enough to receive a little bump in months of employment from the state. And we were able to add a middle school career development coordinator. We also received the program major clarity through a grant. And that is a career exploration program that's used specifically with middle school kids so that they can explore and get information on different careers that will help to lead them through this career development plan. Every student, when they leave eighth grade, will have a career development plan they were in their high school with. It is just that, it's a plan. It's a living document. It is reviewed with guidance counselors, career development coordinators every year at registration. And this is just to give the students a good idea of what they need to do to accomplish their goals that they've set for themselves. One of our big middle school initiatives is our seventh grade career fair. We call it Steer Your Career. We have it at the Aggressively Center outside. You see, there's lots of pictures of machinery, but lots of different local businesses are represented every, represented every year. I don't think we've called anybody that's told us no, so we have a very, very wide variety of businesses. Our priorities going into the next school year are industry needs, alignment with our community college. We want our students to have a career path that has lots of different entrance and exit points. Whether that be at high school, community college, four-year universities. But we are trying to align our programs with the community college based on industry need and student interest. Our goal is in fifth and sixth grade, students are exposed to careers. But in seventh and eighth grade, that exploration really begins. And then in ninth and 10th grade, experiences, experiences with our CTE class, experiences with work-based learning. And like I mentioned earlier, our goal is to increase credentials every year because that means our students are leaving successful. They have a certificate that shows they are prepared to enter the workforce. And I know that was a brief, quick overview, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I didn't think I did that good of a job to get no questions.
I think you're doing a fantastic job and all the teachers and staff, you know, doing a great job. And you seem to win all kinds of awards at these Skills USA, so commend the students. Couple of questions. The trades facility at Stanley Community College, and I look at the priority as a program alignment. Is, is that in play? Like when we say program alignment with, you know, the community college, what does that really mean? Like exiting here and going?
Right, and we meet very regularly with the CTE staff at the community college. And we develop what we call six-year plans. Like I said, it's a plan for a student that has multiple entrance and exit points. The trades facility is really kind of catching up to us a little bit. We've offered construction and masonry and those types of things, and they're moving a little deeper in that at the community college. So students could really leave us in a construction class. They've received NCCR certifications. They've received ASHA certifications. They can move right to the community college, continue on with those certifications, and leave with a two-year degree. Now, we don't match up with every single program that tight, but we are trying.
Second part is on Slide Two. Now, you know I'm a data guy.
Okay.
And so I guess when I look at it, I see you've had a great year. And it's, looks like almost the biggest year in the last seven on there. There's, looks like the middle school is growing. And if I were expanding my mind there, I would feel like that's a sort of a feeder program for you into the high school. Which probably leads to my next question, is I see a, like a seven-year stated decline at the high school level in enrollment. And I'm just curious, is that, on some of the discussions that we've had, things that this board may or may not can control at our level, county level, are we losing opportunities that are within our control?
Not anything that's really in our control. No, we're not. You see, COVID took a big, CTE took a big hit with COVID because students were not at school every day. And the majority of our classes are so hands-on. Students really didn't want to take CTE classes because they knew they weren't going to get that hands-on experience if they weren't at school. So we are rebounding from that for, to a degree. But also at the state level, there's been, there's a lot of emphasis that's been put on middle school and that exploration. And we are kind of trying to catch up with that and really expand those programs as much as we possibly can within the budget constraints that we have.
You're doing a lot with minimal resources.
We try.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do ask for approval for the 2024, 2025 CTE local plan.
I have one thing, Ms. Melton. Kind of goes along with what Mr. List said, but as we look at the programs that we have, I know I had mentioned to you, hopefully at some time, you will be able to present to us programs that we need.
Yes, ma'am.
That we don't have, and our students need them. And how things may not be across the board at each high school. So I think what our board is tasked with is, as we work diligently through plans, is how do we get these offerings and more offerings for our students so that they go out into the workforce when they graduate? Because you, again, are doing a wonderful job, as Mr. List said, with limited budget constraints.
And I would just add middle school to that too. I think middle school and high school equalling that, those offerings out would.
Yes, middle and high school, what offerings, yes. Thank you.
Thank you all.
I've got a question also. You were talking about the community college. Are our students able to use their facility in any way while they're in high school?
Yes, there are career program CCP courses. Most of those do align to our high school classes that it's a progression that they could take. Just as example, they can take Health Science One and Two in high school. Then they can move to the community college to take their CNA courses and now move on to an LPN program and an RN program. And there are multiple entrance and exit points for that. But to answer your question, while they're in high school, let's say we don't have that exact program. We don't have an auto body program in Stanley County schools. There are auto, there is, there are auto body CTE CCP courses that that student can take at the community college utilizing their facility that they have at no cost to them while they're in high school.
So are these advanced courses like some of our schools that don't have automobile or mechanics or such as that? Some of our schools don't have it. Can they take those earlier courses at the community college or is that not available?
They can. High school courses aren't necessarily a prerequisite for the Career and College Promise courses, but they are an enhancement because we do offer so many certifications and those types of things that they do go into those courses more prepared than they would have been if they did not take the high school classes. But they are not a prerequisite.
But they can get some of the classes while they're in high school?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Melton, if you'll just sort of hang right there. This is an action item, so I do need a motion to approve the CTE Career and Technical Education Plan for 24, 25.
I make a motion. We approve the local plan.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This is fast. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Personnel Committee. Oh, I'm, hold on. Oh. Okay, yes. Just be patient with me one second, guys. Hang on. The internet in here is not cooperating. If you've got it pulled up, just. Okay. We're going to postpone this vote into the next meeting. That way everybody has it on their computer and can look at it. Yeah, thank you. I apologize, Ms. Gibson. We'll get that on the next one. Next up, I have Personnel.
We've had no report.
Okay. And then I have Policy with Ms. Watson. I don't know if she has a couple.
Ah, yes, ma'am. Excuse me. These are being brought from the committee for us to see Policy 1310, 4002, Parental Involvement, Policy 4720, Survey of Students. We need to vote on that tonight.
Okay. So you've got. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I can just call them out if that. Okay. So the first one she has is 1310, Parental Involvement. So I would need a motion for that one. Well, it's coming out of committee, so I just need a second. You're right. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
And please correct me if I'm wrong. I looked at the, read through the policy after our March meeting and it didn't appear anything had changed on it. I'm just curious what the committee found out and discussed on that particular policy as it relates to the Student Wellbeing Questionnaire only being administered. A notification. a notification being given to the parents of kindergarten through third grade. And then on the name and pronoun notification versus consent. And before anyone answers that question, I know that this is a step up in parental rights. This is a requirement by general statute.
Yes.
Committee is being forced to have to review. The board's being forced to have to vote on. As it sits right now, under 1310-4002, no parent has to be notified of a questionnaire. So it's a step in the right direction. You know, my question back in March is, well, the legislature arbitrarily, it seems, picked third grade to end that. I'm just curious, when the committee discussed this with the lawyers, what came out of that? And then again, where it says the principal or designated shall notify parents before any changes are made to the names or pronouns used for their children in school records or by school personnel. And I know that that's a step forward in the parental rights in the sense that, as I understand right now, there doesn't have to be a notification. Back in March, you know, my concern was, well, I mean, if my child wanted to change their name or have a pronoun, they're only notifying me, and I'm saying, well, you don't have my consent to do that.
Right.
What was the discussion out of with legal on that particular?
Okay, my understanding from our legal team is that it is general statute, and we are not allowed to amend or change general statute. We can amend or change our local policies and our local policies and procedures outside of this parental involvement policy that's part of that group of things that they're pushing down. We can amend, and we have a procedure on how we handle that in Stanley County schools. But we are not allowed to change the actual verbiage of the general statute to.
But not change the verbiage of the statute.
Mm-hmm.
To, as we did in Policy 3210, we were able to add the grades through, without having it front on me. Anyway, it's through 12th grade.
No, and I'm just going to repeat what I heard is the lawyer said that he would not advise you to make any changes to the policy.
Yeah.
And that's due to the Title IX issues. And when I read Union County's policies, theirs was written the same way as this is.
And Mr. List, I think that, well, I would think Mr. Plummer helped to explain to us, I believe, that we have procedures in place for anything that were to arise. And that all of our principals have, what was it, notebook?
A full document that lists what Parents Bill of Rights says.
Uh-huh.
What our attorneys have advised us of the bottom line of how principals address those. And then any corresponding policies or support documents, which would be those forms, consent forms, those types of things that parents would need, principals would need to be able to share with families.
And those are those internal processes that I was referring to. Like, we're taking care of it within Stanley County schools. We're just not able to adjust that Parent Bill of Rights.
We don't have anything, though, that like if, again, a child wants to change their name or pronoun, we're, we're only notifying the parents and we're going to do what the child says versus what.
No, no, there's a, there's a whole procedure and process that we do within our school system. We're just not allowed to change that big chunk of things that came down to us from the state.
Our position is we would not, we would essentially take the parent's consent. But we don't have that in writing anywhere.
Um, I mean, we have, we have a procedure that we go through. Like, there's a, there's a process. It's a series of meetings and discussions, I believe. But there is a process, and that's that booklet that they're talking about, or notebook, handbook. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so let me get packed. I had, sorry, I pulled that policy up to look at it. So that is 1310-4002 Parental Involvement. And I think I had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Okay. And then Ms. Watson, you've got. 4720 Survey of Students. I'll entertain a motion. Okay, I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Robin. All right, and then I have.
We have revised policies to be approved on the first reading.
Hang on, I think we have. Oh, okay, yes. So the, um, to be approved on first reading, we have 4310 Integrity and Civility. So that's coming out of committee, so I just need a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I think for the board to know this one involved the AI.
Yes.
Security with that.
Uh-huh. Advancement in technology equals advancement in policy. All right, so.
Using it to write papers and such as that.
Yeah, it had, it had all that stuff in there, yes. Okay. All right, so I have motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And then she also has 7430 Substitute Teachers. Okay, I have a second. Any discussion?
This is the one for board members that we need to have in place, the effective future training.
Mm-hmm.
Especially now that we are taking over, it's not ESS any longer. That's what the policy is.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
And we need to rescind Policy 5380.
Okay.
Which is a substitute thing that we would.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Did we get our mom this side? Okay. Next, I have Safety and Security.
We didn't actually, we didn't actually meet this month. But sometimes the things that happen in the Curriculum Instruction Committee will roll over to the Safety Committee as well. And the, their expansion opportunity that was presented to us is exactly one of those things that we were requesting the County Commission come up with some additional money. Couple, little couple of facts. Thirty, since the COVID hit, inflicted self-wounds relating to 10, 19-year-olds in ERs is up 30%. Suicides, 10 to 19 are up 12%. And it's basically what we're seeing is a mental health crisis caused by COVID. We need to make this happen, and we need the County Commission to understand that if it doesn't happen, they're going to have to explain to me how much money a child's life is worth. That program started with things real low in the, in the grade scale. That they need to happen to protect our children. And when I, when I see these statistics, and to me, any child committing suicide is an indictment of the society that he lives in. When we have an opportunity to prevent those things, and we're told we can't get any more money from the County Commission, I'm like, what are you guys going to do when something happens? So that's, that's my, that's my report.
Thank you. Next, I have Curriculum and Instruction. Mr. Plummer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I bring to you tonight something that we look at each year. Mr. Hatley works carefully to help us make a choice for our alternative schools' modified accountability system participation. And basically, it just takes our typical school performance grade and allows our alternative school to be rated a little differently on that scale. It takes into account 20% student persistence, 20% student school achievement, and 60% growth. So we are asking tonight for you to take action for us to move forward with Option B, with the three-year insufficient data option, which we have traditionally used with Stanley Academy.
I move we approve the 2024-25 Alternative Schools' Modified Accountability Participation with Option B, as recommended.
I have a motion.
So I've got a question. What, what happens at the end of three years? I mean, what, what does this mean?
It's not a three-year plan. It's taking data from over a range of three years because they've got insufficient data to really produce. It's not consistent. There's not as much of it with it being an alternative school. So it's a plan that we approve every year, but you're looking at a trend over three years and using three years' worth of data versus just last year's data.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Plummer. Next, I have Auxiliary Services. I have Mr. Dunney and Mistress Mayberry.
Okay, as we bring to you tonight, first of all, our CEP, which is our Community Eligibility Provision. You know, last year, we implemented that for all our elementary schools. And our, our Alabama High, Alabama Middle. This year, we want to bring to the full board the option of electing all our schools to be CEP eligible. We are, in, in the board packet, you'll see about four or five pages of documentation that we want to share with you. And I'll sort of let Michaela go through it, and I'll add through, add to what needs to be added to. So, Michaela, the first spreadsheet.
So your first page, it has all of our schools listed and all these numbers. If you look on the bottom corner where it's 81.42%, that would be our free, our, how many, the percentage of the free rate that we would be getting back in our reimbursement. The next page would be a comparison of if we have no increase of participation for CEP, if we move everybody towards CEP, we would lose about $56,000 if we don't have any increase in participation. The next page.
And that is, that is comparing what our traditional claiming is at our current participation versus what the CEP participation reimbursement would be. Okay, a zero percent of any increase in participation.
And then the next one shows an increase of just a 2% across the board for breakfast and lunch participation. And if we at least get an increase of 2% across the board, we could be in the positive of around $30,000. But we'd have to push the participation for this, all, every school. The last page is just showing our participation for this year. All the schools that are highlighted in blue, those are now CEP schools. The ones that are not highlighted in blue, those are our non-CEP schools this year. So overall, our participation countywide for breakfast was around 31.5%. That's breakfast. And then for lunch, we're sitting at around 64% for lunch. So we would just have to increase that by 2% for breakfast and for lunch to be profitable and being able to have every child eat at no cost.
Currently, our West Stanley High School, West Stanley Middle School, South Stanley High, South Stanley Middle, North Stanley High, North Stanley Middle, and our early college campus are, the students have to pay. We're currently setting right now with fees that our schools are going to be responsible paying by June 30th of meals that has been served over the year to staff, to students that have not paid at those, those locations. I feel that if we can move to CEP all over the county, that then we don't have to worry about that cost. I think last Wednesday, our projected cost was a little over $15,000 that the schools are going to have to pay at this point. As we done a projection of the 2%, I, I feel like with a push, and then of course adding on those schools with a push of, of getting our staff on board or letting our students go through the line and receive a hot meal every day for the breakfast and lunch, as well as getting our principals to understand that it's necessary that our children do have an opportunity to eat those hot meals that are served daily, that we shouldn't have a problem increasing our percentage of, of participation to 2%. I feel that currently we're sitting roughly about 76% at the, at the, at this system level for lunch meals. We should be, by having a CEP across the board, that should be in the least high 80s, low 90s of participation for our school system. So if we could jump that 13% to 90% participation in our school system, then our program should be absorbently receiving, increasing the revenue percentage. Or revenue stream that we would get with our child nutrition program. So that, not only from y'all's perspective, from our perspective as administrators of the school system, our principals, our teachers, and right on down, should be pushing, if we go this route, should be pushing to get students to go through that line and eat a hot meal, and get a hot meal.
I'd like to make a comment, a couple things. First of all, with this program, all children in Stanley County can eat for free.
Yes.
And secondly.
So what is CEP? What is that?
Yeah, and I just want to say too, before you ask, excuse me, is secondly, I don't have administrators chasing parents for fees all day long. And CEP means Community Eligibility Program. So you use the community, you know, they give you percentages, and that gives you eligibility for how they do this program.
Right.
But I just want to make sure that those two points are made.
In layman's terms, to get out of the edge you speak here. What's the bottom line? Are we losing money in this this year?
No, we are not losing money this year.
So we're, we're in the black.
Yes, yes, we are in the black. This will be our fourth year of this program, child nutrition program in Stanley County schools being in the positive. That, and like I said, this has been, this has been a great thing for us. Our, over, pretty much in the average reimbursement over this year, we have seen as high as in the $5 million, I mean, $500,000 reimbursement in a month versus a $375,000 reimbursement in a month. So we have got real good reimbursements this year. Can't tell you right now where we stand for, for a bottom line, but I'm sure that we are still going to be in the, the black. I don't anticipate anything major that's coming down the pipes that's going to reduce, make that negative. We have been positive throughout the whole year when looking at the financials for child nutrition. So, so I feel that this will be our fourth year with a positive, in the black, child nutrition program.
I think one more note to make too. If you look at on, on DPI's website, per pupil allotment, normally the numbers you've been using is with child nutrition. If you take the child nutrition out, it actually goes down because our child nutrition helps the per pupil allotment. There's two figures there that you can look at.
And I just want to make a comment. I think the fact that all of our students in the county could eat for free two hot meals a day is, is a huge plus. But I have one request, is that we market this very well? Because I know there are a lot of parents that don't understand, even if your child packs a lunch or brings a portion of their lunch, they can still get a breakfast and a lunch with this program at no cost. So whether they tote a lunchbox or not into that cafeteria, they are able to have a hot meal. And having two, two hot meals in children's bellies every single day can only improve educational quality in my, in my mind, so just putting that out there.
And we have had that discussion this afternoon. Michaela and I had that discussion, as well as Dr. Dennis, that this is, this program is going to only be as good as the way we approach it when it comes to being, making the community knowledgeable. We've even, we even made a comment that it would not hurt that it be in the newspaper, that it would not hurt that it be on TV, it would not hurt to be on the radio. We've discussed about having, creating leaflets that it can be put on the Facebook post, on our school websites, our website, our county website. And then, you know, even having a flyer available that we can pass out to the parents when they come in during open houses and stuff like that. It's going to have to be sold in a way that we not only have us as our, as the central office administration on board, we've got to have our students, teachers on board and our principals on board. we've got to have our students, teachers onboard and our principals onboard. You know, this year, there has, and I'll just tell you, there has been opportunities this year that we have had students with a lunchbox that's not been, had an option to go through that hotline. We, we've got to get that out of our mindset of our staff. We've got to say, give those children options to get in that line regardless of they have a lunchbox. And that rather be, that can be rather teachers or, or principals that can allow that. So, that, you know, it's only good as what we present as administration and what we police to our staff that we sell this program to build our participation. And I said, this should not, we've done great. This year, be even able to add these additional seven schools. I feel like that's been a positive. And then, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward that our participation, if we do it correctly and get it out there informative to our community that we could easily see it in the 80 figures this upcoming year.
And Mistress Mayberry, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't have to get a whole lunch and eat all the items that are on, on your tray. You can go through and get.
You have to get the reimbursable meal.
Right, just a few things.
You get, you get the meal that's on that tray, and whether you take it and give it to your friend or you throw it in the trash can, we can count that as a meal that's reimbursable.
Okay.
Mr. Dunney.
Yes.
Backing up just a minute. I know you, you spoke about the charges that the schools have on, for this year for school lunch. What kind of consideration do we make for those schools that, that are not fortunate enough to have school funds in order to be able to reimburse the school system for those lunches?
In, in some, in some history, we've had communities step up to the plate and, and, and help out in those charges, whether it be churches or businesses. We've even had parents to step up and say, I'll be willing to pay for another child's fees. You know, the, we, I don't think that we've had a school yet that has said they're unable to, to make the payment. So, you know, I feel that it's, it's, it like, just said, it would be, it's detrimental to have to require our schools to cover this. It's federal law that rather the schools do it or we have to do it in our local budget. But, but you know, I feel that, that it's not been as, as, as bad as it could be. That they could, because a lot of our principals stepped up and got community involvement to help with the kids make meals.
Are they allowed to use any of their ADM funds that are surplus funds at the end of the year to pay for that?
They can, yes.
Mr. Dunney, and I'm playing stupid here, so I apologize for being ignorant. I just want to make sure I understand the 0% increase graph.
Okay.
The data on there, the numbers. So, the traditional claiming method is what we're doing now.
Yes.
Which means that a kid goes through, pays for the lunch, maybe charges it, and then we're having to collect for what they don't pay.
That would be your non-CEP schools.
And so, this total traditional claiming of 4.377, does that include everybody? Is that assuming that everyone's paid? And I know you mentioned that every school's paid, but is that the actual dollar amount? Or it's a claimed amount, meaning that if, say, $100,000 between the schools were not paid, it's actually 4.277 of revenue that came in, not 4.3?
And you may have to help me with this. The way I, way I've been taught on this graph, on this chart, is that we have, we're saying that at the bottom of that graph, when it's talked about the enrolled students and the identified students, okay? You're, you're, you're dealing with how, the percentage of identified students, that would be students that are eligible for free, free, free meals. And versus, and then the 81.42% would be what we're claiming that we can use as a free reimbursement. So, with that being said, that if we're feeding 4,000, if we're feeding 8,523 kids, okay? Traditionally, with the funding as we currently have right now, we can only, we would receive 4.3 million dollars, 4.377, okay? But if we go to the CEP with the same numbers, so that means 0% participation, we're going to keep the same numbers stagnant as what we use in traditional for this year, then we would be at a loss.
A, a loss in the sense that it's versus traditional or a loss that we actually had cost higher than our revenue?
No, that would be the loss versus traditional reimbursement. This don't have nothing to do.
It's not an actual loss on the books. It's just, it's lost revenue potential.
Lost revenues based on the traditional.
Not that we have more costs than.
Correct.
Then, okay.
Correct, correct. Yeah, yeah. This is just a revenue thing. This don't have nothing to do with expenses. This is a revenue thing.
But if we went the CEP route, and I apologize for asking these questions and sounding stupid, sorry. If we go the CEP route, we're not actually, and correct me, we're not actually losing money if there's no increase.
Right.
Like, so we're, we're, if, if we're in the black now, we would still be in the black under the CEP method with no participation movement at all.
Right. Well, I mean, and I can't say that because I don't know what the cost of food is going to end up being. I don't know, you know, what the cost of labor. I mean, we're just, we were talking earlier about what we got to do with our classified pay scale. That's part of the classifieds pay scale. All your staff that is John tradition is classified staff. So, you know, I can't tell you what the bottom line is going to end up being because there's variables there that we've got to put in place for next year. And like I said, we don't know what the cost of food and all that kind of stuff may be. What this is just saying is that you'll have $56,000 less in revenue if there's no percent increase in participation based on traditional versus CEP, all CEP.
But if we were forecasting it, does that put us in the black?
If I would forecast it based on the expenses that we've done this year, we should be fine, we'd still be in the black. You just would be $56,000 less than what you would be if you were traditional revenue.
And if our costs go up, does the reimbursement rate go up?
No, no. Now, there's, there's, there's plans out there that they're trying to put where they want to increase the reimbursement rate for CEP for next year. You know, that's just, that's, that's bills out there to look at the continuing eligibility provision reimbursement rates. It was out there this year, but they, they never done that. They put a grant in place to help, help school systems that were not participating in CEP to go to CEP route. But there was no increase in the reimbursement rate at that point.
And so, if we, so we'd have to push, I'm looking at then the 2% increase. So, to, to be able to get $30,000 above what we could get under the revenue potential under the traditional method, we would have to see an increase of participation rate.
Yes, yes.
So, if we didn't and we went back, then the traditional method is better.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, this one was asked about the marketing piece of that.
But why are we, if a traditional method is better, then why are we going the CEP route? I guess that's where I'm confused at.
I think we look at a couple of things. I think we think we can boost our percentages at the schools that are paying for them right now. When they find out it's free, that may be a hindrance to some people for that participation rate at those schools. That's what we're hoping.
Some of the feedback that I've gotten.
That's what we're hoping.
Anecdotal, is that there's, there's not enough time to get through those lines. And so, like, use a, school say like Locust, for example. You, you got a very limited window, and you're trying to pile the kids in. They don't, they got like seven to 10 minutes to try to eat. And, and my son, he is a fantastic son. He takes about 30 minutes to eat a sandwich. And so, it's, I don't understand it. I don't know where he got it from. But that's some of the feedback I've seen, and that's what makes me concerned a little bit on, well, if you, if you rush everybody else in on the hopes that we can get reimbursed and we'd have to have an increase in it in order to get more revenue, it seems like a little bit of a risk.
I, I would say this too, that we could look at that at a school-by-school basis because that's not set at the district level, how they run their lunches.
Okay.
And another thing I'm looking at, I don't mind losing a little bit of money if I'm not going to rent, if I can feed everybody. And I think that's one thing that we, you know, have a conversation around too, or if no one's hesitant to go eat because they don't have the money that day.
Yeah, I was going to say, some of that, some of that is just kids not taking the time to eat. They're doing other things. And some of it is, again, what he was saying, not, not sure if there's money in that account to get food. And so, they, you know, may not go in there. But I, I think one of the key takeaways is that every kid in our school system can get a hot breakfast and a hot lunch every single day that they're in school.
I think you've done a phenomenal job. I mean, to be in the black on a system that captures revenue profit or your profits and your costs go up, but you can't raise the price, the economics is flip-flopped on that. So, thank you.
And you know, and that was one thing, and, and I know y'all can recall this, you know, when we, when we implemented CEP and it was just to elementary schools, and then of course Alabama High and Alabama Middle, the other seven schools couldn't understand, well, why are we not in that mix? You know, and I've even had principals to call me. I know Michaela's had them to call her and say, what can we do to get to that point? And believe it or not, we've, we've had a, a few of them that said, I'll do whatever I can. If I need to do another application, I'll go and bring it to, take it to the, to the parent myself. You know, and, and they, they have, they have went above and beyond that because they know that they want their children, their students to eat. And they don't want to have to worry about, first of all, finding a fundraiser to raise the money to cover those costs. Believe it or not, I've got a school right now to ask, could they do a fundraiser to pay their, I think it's 500 and some dollars that they've got to pay? And I thought, how are you going to do a fundraiser? You don't have students there. But they said they can go through the channels and they will have community involvement to get that money. And I said, well, whatever you have to do, I commend you doing it. And you know, because we told them we would like to have that, we've got to have that money by June, before I can bring it to y'all, June the 25th, I'm closing the year, I've got to make sure there's no red, I mean, no fees earned owed to the child nutrition program. Because if there is, then I've got to write a check and get Dr. Dennis to sign it so she can put it in her ledger that she has zero meals charged. That's, that's just federal law through our, for, and we have to have a report to give to the auditors when they come in September that shows we have no meals outstanding that has not been paid. So, you know, and, you know, and it's, and we have worked, and I commend Michaela. She has done a great job. We, we first said, well, is there a way, if we can't put them all in one grouping? See, the CEP has groupings. Do you can, you're allowed to do groupings. If you can't get all your schools into one grouping like we've presented here, you could do different kind of groupings and say, okay, maybe we're going to put our inner-city schools in this grouping and our, maybe our high schools in this grouping or whatever. She presented that to me, what, about three or four weeks ago, and we had four groupings. And I said, okay. I says, you know, thi, this is good. I said, but what is it going to be to get everybody under the same grouping? And then that grouping, y'all, lasts for four years. Now, it's not to say we can't go back and revise it. Maybe participation goes up and we want to revise it. I mean, or maybe if, Lord forbid, something happened and we need to get out of it because it's not as profitable as we want to. But we, once we, once you approve it, and we send it, we're locked into that for four years. And unless we have to change it for unseen, unforeseen circumstances. Just in my field, in my gut, I don't think we're going to have that problem with getting that 2% increase. I mean, you know, you're serving, you're serving breakfast at 31% right now. I mean, you know, if we, like I said earlier, we promote it, and we've got to have a promotion from up, from top down. You know, as you're making, as you're out there in the community, promote. Next year, we're going to have children eating free, you know? At least getting a hot meal, you know? We're going to promote it. I don't see that we can't build that, that breakfast up to at least 35%. I mean, every child can't get to school and have the time to go eat. The ones that's striving, they're going to wait to the 11th hour to get to that classroom before that tardy bell rings. They got time to go get nothing to eat. But, but you know, when it comes to lunch, they're there. If we can get that participation up for lunch in the 80s, you're going, you're going to have, you're going, you're going to have that bottom line of revenue coming in where we need it to come in at.
Well, and not to bring the CEP where back up, but during COVID, I know that we had certain schools that were doing second chance breakfasts. And we had cafeteria staff standing in hallways handing out bag breakfasts to students ready to go as they came in the door. So, I know that your people can do this with the right resources and promote this in the way that we need to, to get that participation up because it's there. I've seen it. I mean, they, they've done it in the past, so.
And, and I'm just telling you, labor dollars is based on how many meals and plates you serve. You, you know, she, she may be limited to being able to have two people in a cafeteria right now because of the number of plates that are, that are served. But if we can build that participation, you're serving more plates, she can start looking at, putting more labor, more labor there. So, in a situation like Locust, if they've got five staff members in that cafeteria, and maybe we need to look and see if we need to add a sixth one. Well, in order to do that, you've got to build your participation, to be able to build your plate, plates that are served so she can get the labor dollars to increase that, even if it's stop a three-hour person through those three hours of lunch to help with that issue of getting those kids through those lines.
And full disclosure, this is not a knock to Devron or Locust. I just simply used that as an example, so.
There's a lot of kids in that school.
There's a lot of kids, but I would not take it. We, we've had discussions with other principals that say, you know, getting the kids through the line, get through the line. But, but like I said, you can't put people there and labor dollars there if you don't get the participation and serve those plates.
Well, it seems like our board, we can give the approval to this. But then it will be Dr. Dennis and, yes, the staff, principals, whatever, to, to promote it and make it happen. We can give the approval, but then it's got to come from within to make it happen.
Yes.
And this, this is an action item, so I will need action on this and then a separate action on what Miss Mayberry has to present after this.
You need an action element here?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the CEP option method.
Okay. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, that passed. So, now we have the child nutrition contact, contract renewal?
Yes. This is all of our vendors that we use throughout the year. It's just a continuation. It's a renewal from our last year's contracts as well.
Okay. Board members, you have that in board docs. You should have that attachment there. Any questions for Miss Mayberry on that?
Okay, is there any significant increase in these costs? I seems similar to what it was last year, but I don't have it in front of me. But I know there was a big jump like the year before, I believe.
There was. But this year, there's not a significant jump on any of them. They're all right there at basically the same.
Okay. Is there any way we can get something other than cheesy bread offered?
That is a good item. I don't know, every Tuesday.
And Wednesday and Thursday and Friday.
Well, it should just be Tuesdays. I can't say they don't do it other days, but.
Okay, this is also an action item, so I will entertain a motion on the contract renewal.
I'll move to approve the contract renewal.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This has also passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I have superintendent comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of reminders. June the 14th is Flag Day, and June the 15th, next day, is Father's Day. And to all the fathers out there, and my father never, but young, we hope to spend time with them and, you know, thank them. And Father's Day celebrates and honors the men who have embraced the central old fatherhood and thank fathers and father figures for their devotion to their family and sacrifices that they make. Two comments I want to make as far as the end of the year. I thought the end of the year wrapped up really smooth. I enjoyed the graduation that I was able to attend. Our board members were able to enjoy the graduations that they attended. I heard good things about them. Of course, it's a, you know, celebratory time of year when you can see the culmination of all the hard work of the graduates and of course, the teachers and the families and all the people who supported our graduates. It's just a great day and a momentous occasion. I always enjoy this time of year. And then as soon as graduation's over, I dread what's coming up next because you've got to get ready for the next school year. And of course, that takes a lot of work. I don't dread it, I should say. I just know there's a lot of work coming our way. And while we've been putting in a lot of work, and you know, even though we do have approximately two months until we have teachers coming back, that two months, that eight weeks goes very fast. And so, we're trying to gear up for next year. And having said that, that we will have our leadership summit here at the end, our retreat, I should say, at the end of the month begins on the 24th and the 25th, and all board members are invited. That begins at 9:00. And we would love to come if you, you would like to come and just, you know, drop in and, you know, of course, I don't expect you to stay the whole time, but you know, just drop in and kind of look at some of the stuff that we're doing. We'll have an agenda up prior to that. If there's any specific part of the, in our training or anything you'd like to attend, you're more than welcome to. And so, I'd like to invite you to that. After that, and right after that, actually, I have a summer leadership in Asheville, which is done through the Western RISA. And you know, this is an annual thing, and we'll have a superintendent's quarterly meeting that occurs, or a superintendent's meeting that occurs to that as well, that, that we, we all get together, and then other leadership joins for the rest of, the rest of the time. It was exciting. Now, in. Uh, it was exciting, I'll end on this, to, um, be a part and to actually, uh, see the groundbreaking Indy and see a lot of work kind of fruition again. We're excited about the new addition. We're excited about new construction, um, new facilities and modern facilities for our children. And, um, you know, uh, we're gonna meet here, uh, tomorrow. I'll meet with all the architects and, or the architect and the builders and all that. And, um, you know, we're getting everything set up, start scratching dirt, so that's an exciting time. Uh, thank you and, uh, have a good evening.
Thank you. Uh, next I have board member comments. I'm gonna start with, uh, Dr. Lefler.
Yes. It was great to see all the retirees, but when you look at all that experience, uh, walking out of the door, uh, it's really important that we get good people to replace them. And I hope this year that we are able to fill their jobs in their shoes. It was also great to see tonight, uh, during the curriculum, everybody's been pushing technology and digital books and all this stuff. So I think it's joyous and wonderful that we're seeing some books, actual books that students are gonna be able to get and they can take them home and they're theirs and work with them so that we kinda know where they're at. I think it's great and, and I think the teachers have learned at, to embrace them also, so I think it's really an important thing. One thing that I've tried to work on the three and a half years that I've been on the board is equal opportunities in the, i- in our county and our district. So far, we hadn't reached that. We've got certain pockets that have extreme opportunities and that we have other areas in our county that don't. We're working on it, it's very hard, but I hope this board will keep up that work because we need each student in our district to have the same opportunity for their education. It's that time of the year for vacations. Everybody enjoy their vacation. As Dr. Dennis said, in another two months, we'll be starting back again. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Whitaker?
I'd just like to congratulate all the retirees. I'm sure we will all do that, but it was awesome seeing all of them tonight. Um, I encourage each of you to try retirement when you get to the point that you can because it is an awesome thing. Um, I, I told someone tonight, I feel like I should be retiring from this system because a majority of my years were given to Stanley County Schools. Uh, but I finished out in a, in another, in another district, so, um, but I, I'm just so appreciative for all of those staff. Um, again, uh, thank you to our teachers and all of our support staff. We had an awesome year this year and it will definitely be a short summer, I'm sure. Um, I wanted to mention the Indy Edition again. I encourage all of you to purchase the SNAP because there's gonna be a picture in there of the students and the board shoveling dirt for the first time in a long time. That really excites me. Um, so I just encourage you to watch the SNAP for that. And Charles is gonna make sure that it makes its way in there. Those children are so excited. They all had shovel, they had their hard hats on and we, it was just a really great day. So, um, I hope we have many more of those.
Front, front page, right? Ms. Gibson?
And not to add any added pressure to you, Charles, but I requested a pink shovel and I got one. So, ma- make sure that you show that pink shovel. Um, and I'm not sure, Mr. Um, Dave Andrews, if what, what you had on the radio, was it on the radio? Wow. Thank, thank you. Now, if you want to add anything else about the Indy and, and the excitement that, that we still, I mean, I am really still excited. And all, and, um, board members, I know you probably have too, but so, so many of the parents have, have reached out and, and teachers that are also excited to, for the, the build and, you know, modern classrooms. And, um, and I think Ms. Whitaker kinda said it best too. It's, it's been a long time, long time coming for this school system. And I hope that there's much more in the future. Again, um, certainly congratulations to the retirees. I really want to, um, express, um, great thankfulness and gratefulness for Ms. Raper, Ms. Melton. I know that Mr. Plummer's not in here, but all that you have done in the area of CTE and curriculum for our students and what they are going to be offered, um, in the coming years. That, that is, um, as a teacher, I'm excited about that. And I would be excited to know I had those materials in my classroom. And I know our parents will too. And for our county office staff that's here, and you're always here, and you're always here late. Thank you for, for being here and the presentations that were, that were given. Um, and I just, I want to say one thing too, that even with this board, um, and there, and there's things even tonight somewhat that some of us could, um, disagree upon. But yet, in the end, this is a board that is extremely united and, um, it determined, um, to make wise decisions and to put our children and their education first. And I appreciate that from the board members that I work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson?
It was a thrill to be part of that groundbreaking, although that's too close to manual labor for me. But, uh, I do, I do want to use this ti- opportunity to make an apology. At the joint meeting with the county commissioners, I was frustrated with a lot of things that I heard from those folks. And I was pretty frustrated, but in general, about the lack of reception. We, we have needs they just don't want to hear about, so. But, uh, anyway, at the end of the, and in the meeting, it's not what I said. I'm not apologizing for what I said. I said what I meant and I meant what I said. The way I did it was disrespectful to Ms. Gibson and it was disrespectful to Ms. Carla Poplin. And I want to apologize for that because that's not how professional people deal with things. So, I do want to apologize for that.
I appreciate that, Bill. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Watson?
Well, I'm just gonna ditto everything everybody said. Uh, I do appreciate the, uh, retired people. Uh, hopefully they'll be back in six months. I hope they, legislature will change that time in maybe three months. That would work. But anyway, um, I just wish everybody a happy, happy summer. Uh, enjoy your time because it won't be long. We'll be back here. The kids will be back in school. And I think a lot of them would still like to be back in school. So, everybody have a good summer. Um, thank you, County Office, for all your hard work. I appreciate everything that you all do for our children, for us. You work hard every day and I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Lef?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I usually reserve the time for more serious business-like comments, but I'm probably gonna get the evil eye if I, if I do that here. Um, and Bill didn't say anything I could follow, so I'll keep it light. Um, I appreciate all the teachers. My kindergarten, my daughter's kindergarten teacher sent home a manual of math and reading for her to do, uh, for the summer. And all of the kids, um, and she apparently does that every year. Um, I was shocked by it, was impressed by it. Um, this is a twenty-eight-year veteran that's retiring next year, um, and sent home a, a picture booklet. And when I look at the teachers that impacted me in my career, um, my academics throughout life, you do remember those people. People like Gary Moran, um, who was a fantastic English teacher. And so that does make a difference in these kids' lives, um, and it does last with them forever. I appreciate the county office, the staff. Everyone works on, being a finance guy, everyone in this system works on extremely minimal resources. To quantify that, almost last in the state, uh, from a local level. And so to get the level of production and output, uh, is, is amazing. Um, I, to echo Ms. Gibson's comments, I do think this is one of the best boards that I've seen in a long time. We're able to have disagreements on policy or, um, express our viewpoints, but at the end of the day, find a consensus to help us move forward. Um, and I think that we're doing, this, this board, uh, whether it be in funding or facilities or curriculum or personnel, that every decision's made is well-thought-out, it's well-discussed. There's many hours and time put into it. There's lots of information gathering, um, to, to make a decision that helps this system put their best foot forward, uh, and take care of the people and to offer opportunities for, for the students. And not every decision makes everyone happy. But that's, that's what people put us up here for, was to make tough decisions. Um, so I commend the board. Thank everyone. I hope everyone in the system has a, a, a good summer and, uh, see you soon.
Thank you. And I will just, um, take a moment to also say, um, it's a pleasure to work with the other six individuals sitting up here. Um, at the end of the day, we, we don't always agree, but we always, um, try to do what's best for our students and staff. And, um, I do appreciate that from all of you. Um, I had the pleasure of attending a dear graduation and five other graduation ceremonies. Um, and, uh, some of the others join me. And, um, those all were, um, just pleasing to see our students excelling and succeeding and getting all of those, um, certificates and, um, diplomas. And then, um, hearing about the DRS A, um, at Almar Middle School where I was able to attend, um, just hearing what that student, some of the things that they had written about. Um, I just really appreciated being, I'm gonna be a part of that. Um, myself and Ms. Gibson were able to be a part of a career day not too long ago, so just finishing the year up. Um, just some exciting things, um, as our students are making decisions and, um, venturing out to summer. Um, the groundbreaking at Indy was, um, wonderful. Um, that's something that I don't think we've had happen in our county for quite a while. And, um, I'm supposed to tell you, Charles, apparently, that that needs to be in the paper. It must be pick on, it's pick on Charles night, I'm sorry.
If the number's right and spell the names right.
Make sure all the names are spelled right. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just messing with Charles. Um, no, it was a very good day. It was a very exciting day. And, um, to see the students out there excited and the staff excited, um, that was, that was just wonderful. Um, but, uh, summertime means, um, longer hours for myself, but it also means I get to spend more time with some of our students. And so that is exciting for me and I get to, um, do some activities with them, uh, in my everyday job. So, um, summer looks a little different for me than most, but, um, I look forward to that and enjoy it. So I just wish all of our students and our staff a happy summer. And, um, I will conclude my comment with that. Um, our next board meeting will be June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, which is the Tuesday here in the Jean McIntyre Room at six fifteen. So, note that date. It's the end of this month due to the fact that our next meeting would be during the July fourth holiday week. So it will be June twenty-fifth on a Tuesday. Okay, and I will now call us back into closed session as we recessed earlier. I'm gonna call us back into open session. Uh, next on our agenda tonight is the personnel agenda. And we need to, um, talk about the Personnel Agenda Section Two, the amended section.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the board approves Section Two of the amended personnel, uh, reports.
Okay, so, coming out, I have a motion for, I mean, no, I need a motion to, it's late, I need.
I move, I move that we approve Section Two of, and the amended, Section Two of the Personnel Agenda.
So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that has passed. All right. Now I need a motion to adjourn. Motion in the several seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.